Okay, the camera's on as well. Welcome, everybody, to the public hearing. Tonight is Wednesday, the 20th of March. It's 7:30 in the evening. Let me start by saying, in case we need them, the emergency exits are the two back corners of the auditorium and the door you came in. Hopefully, we don't need them. The planning board of the town of Hatfield will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, March 20th, 2013, at 7:30 PM in Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts, to consider amending the Hatfield zoning bylaw, Section 5.5.7, subsection A, with regard to medium and large solar ground mount systems, and amend Section 3.0 use regulations, Table 1, by adding subsections 6.23, 6.24, 6.25, and 6.26 to Section 6.0 accessory uses with regard to solar energy systems. Everybody should have signed in, so we have a record of who was here. And I've included, there's a few more copies left of the proposed bylaw. In a minute, we'll open the floor to discussion. There's a microphone. You please need to come up to the microphone because the acoustics in here is such that you won't be able to be heard on the tape. The bylaw that we have in front of us is the bylaw that we discussed at our February meeting that was submitted from the Energy Committee with the changes to the accessory use table, 6.25 and 6.26, all the way across through all the zones, to require either site plan approval with a special permit or a special permit. And then there's some redlining on the first two paragraphs. And I submitted this to the town attorney for his review, and he included the red line, there's a word "accept" is crossed out, and the town attorney put those in for clarification. Is that clear to everybody? We'll open the floor to discussion. Anybody have anything to? Okay, Mrs. Cox, please. Please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record as well.
Joan Cox, 44 Main Street, Hatfield. There's nothing here about screening or setbacks, and I wondered what you had in mind for...
Well, that's all part of the special permit process. That's in the zoning bylaw, screening and all that. So, we don't need to address it in here because it would be redundant. So, all the requirements for a special permit that are included in the zoning bylaw are required here.
Right. So, can I just ask, because I don't have a copy of that with me, does that mean that the setbacks that apply in these zones would apply for this?
Yes.
But screening isn't, is that, is screening usually built into those, the town bylaws, does that have a section on screening for what would be really, you know, in a kind of industrial use in residential zones? I mean, what's the, what kind of screening do we have on the books right now for that?
It's in the special permit process. Part of that is parking, is screening, is lighting.
But what I mean is that in the residential zones, is there, what...
No, it all comes under the special permit regardless of the zone. It's under the special permit process is where we, and we can do any conditions. We can say what color trees, what color the leaves need to be on the trees, or what size the trees need to be, if we feel that they need to be bigger or denser.
Or a different variety or whatever.
Yeah, different varieties, that sort of thing. That's all comes under the special permit process, whether it's a solar application or a garage. Yeah, a garage or something like that.
So, that's something, then, that the planning board would decide on?
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct.
At the hearing, yes.
Mr. Pichko.
Good evening, board members and Hatfield folks. First off, I want to say that the process was a difficult one to get to this place. And even the end product today is very, very different from the state model. But I'll let that go moving forward. What I really want to do right now is be confirmatory to what we were given tonight. And the bylaw is going to be presented, the first section, there's a cross out, and the word "except" is crossed out, and the word "and" is in. So, that is no longer going to be an exception to Section 5.4.7-B.
That's correct. Again, I had the town attorney review it, and this was his recommendation.
Okay. And the following section, under the new Section B to 5.4.7, in the red, and it says, "And require the following." So, all of those under Item 1, 1 through K, will now be a part of the bylaw.
That's correct.
Okay. One of the things that I would like to have confirmation on, and maybe the board can address it, is in regards to exempting or putting in medium and large-scale solar mount systems, it appears that the current bylaw that will be presented to the town is not going to regulate the dimension and density. Is that a true statement? Or will there be dimension and density requirements, including setbacks in aperture structures?
Well, the notes have the limits in there. This was, again, what the Energy Committee gave us. We discussed this last time. The notes have limits on areas.
Two acres, more than two acres.
Yeah. And we also have limits on impervious surfaces and that sort of thing. That applies more to parking and structures. These are impervious, but they shed the water on, and the ground under them is still pervious.
Okay. Again, these are just confirmatory for consideration, Bob. There's no regulations for utility connections. Is there a regulation that regulates the connection of these particular facilities to the grid? Is there supposed to be a permit or something in place prior to these being installed? Or is that something that is part of a different process?
I would assume that's some, it's not part of the planning board's process. The power company, and maybe the Energy can answer this, but I would assume the power company, you can't build it, and then they'll allow you to hook in. You need to get all that squared away. Electrical permits are required from the local electrical inspector for all that sort of electrical equipment, the wiring of that. Maybe I can ask somebody from the Energy Committee to speak to permits for connection to the grid.
You have to get permits from the electrical inspector.
Who has to get the permits? Developer?
The installer and the installer probably told him for the home.
It's not the planning board.
No.
Can you hear the answers?
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
And the electric company has to be involved in the process. There's a whole lot of forms, must be six, different times I had to sign on.
It's a three-month process.
So, the power company, the answer is, the power company...
Developer.
It's called the interconnection agreement. It requires three months process. The project developer must submit an application. The utility will require them to provide all answers to questions and studies, and if the supply can be absorbed by the utility, you know, it's a lengthy process.
And I would assume the connection has to meet the power company's standards for connecting into their grid.
Which includes all the safeties.
And also meet the electrical code.
The height of both around everything.
For the electrical permit from the local electrical inspector. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm bringing up his points. Okay. No regulations for road construction? Does this, will an aspect of this address the road constructions going in and about the facility?
Well, I wouldn't call it a road. I would say it's a private drive.
Okay.
And just the way you build your driveway into your house, you try and do a good job so that you get some service life out of it.
Okay.
Again, it's not a public road. It would be a private drive.
My consideration on raising that question is if there's no regulation on building of the road, there is the potential that you would have to get emergency vehicles out there. And in that event...
Well, that would be something we would, not to interrupt, that would be something we could, we would look at in the special permit process, to be sure there was enough width for an emergency vehicle to get in there, that there was adequate parking for the service people, whoever's going to service the facility to park there. We get input from the fire chief or the police chief to be sure that the driveway would meet their requirements for emergency vehicles in and out of there.
In regards to the proposed bylaw, how does the board plan on dealing with the hazardous materials that would be on site? How does that get addressed through the process?
What hazardous materials?
Well, within the panels themselves.
Well, again, if they're, it would be in the special permit process.
Excuse me, are the comments necessary up here?
I think he was anticipating the answer. I'm answering the question now.
Because I would think so.
Part of the special permit process would be to deal with any hazardous material. We've done it with garages and that sort of thing. People that have motor oil have, that's considered as a hazardous material. We've asked or had requirements for disposal, of that sort of thing.
In regards to impacts on agricultural land, our bylaws currently are riddled with protecting agriculture, whether it be prime or whether it be the next grade down, which is extremely significant or important to the state. Does that become a portion of the consideration, since there's really no true regulation on it?
Well, it would be, and, again, not to interrupt, the Hatfield Agricultural Advisory Committee has sent a letter dated January 9th, and they're asking us to, it says, "The Commission recognizes the potential value of solar installations on farms to supply on the farm energy needs and to produce a supplemental revenue stream for farming operations. As the installation of solar arrays, particularly land-based systems, can have long-term impact on agricultural resources in town, the Commission provides the following guidelines and recommendations to reduce such impacts. Bullet point, to the extent possible, solar arrays on farms should be placed on existing buildings on the farm. And second bullet point, if a land-based array is to be considered, utilize non-agricultural soil areas or reclaimed or previously disturbed non-crop land sites." So, they've asked us to take a look at that. And, again, they would be part of the permit process if they could come to the public hearing for the special permit and voice their opinion as well.
Thank you for reading that, by the way. Joan alluded to this earlier, Joan Cox, in regards to regulations on vegetative screenings. We feel that that's an important aspect of the entire process, to ensure that it either blends into the area or indigenous species are used, or, as you put earlier, you get to choose the color. So, I think you addressed that. Regulations on drainage. I know that although there's going to be undisturbed land, there's going to be a tremendous amount of concrete blocks embedded into the ground, and that's going to take up a substantial portion of area for water to perk. Is that going to be an aspect of the whole particular process?
It's all part of the special permit process. We look at all aspects of the project.
I know it didn't seem or appear to be extremely important, but I did take the opportunity to get ahold of our fire chief, Bill Belden, and asked him specifically in regards to safety standards and knowing exactly what was out in a field, a solar array. Would he feel that it was important to receive training and, not only training, but all the materials, the MSDS sheets and stuff? And he firmly felt that that was an extremely important aspect, and I don't know if that's fully addressed in here, but I just want to bring it to the board's attention.
Well, I don't know if that's a zoning issue, though. I mean, there are...
It's the safety.
I know there's a triangular system for, or a diamond-shaped system to identify what is in a building for the firemen that need to go there to deal with an emergency.
Before they go in.
Yeah, and I would assume that would, the fire chief would...
Would he have the opportunity to weigh in on the process as well? Would you be notifying him?
Well, yeah.
Public hearing, there we go.
For the public hearing, yeah. And, again, that's part of his job, to train his men to deal with various situations in town. That's why they have training.
One of the things that we all have to participate in when we build a house or change how we're using land is going through the Conservation Commission. And currently, because it's considered farmland, there's really no environmental standards for land clearing, soil erosion, or habitat impacts. Is that going to be an aspect that'll be considered as we move forward within the zoning?
Again, the special permit process would look at that. If the project required Conservation Commission approval, then that would be part of our consideration. We're certainly not going to overrule the Conservation Commission and allow something to happen in a wetlands or too close to a wetlands.
The, there's, currently, we don't have a solar array in Hatfield, and I think we can all agree on that.
But we do have a solar array in Hatfield.
Oh, are you talking by the DPW?
State Highway Department has a solar array.
I wasn't sure if that was North Hampton or Hatfield.
That's Hatfield.
That's Hatfield, okay. What are the guidelines for watching and monitoring the operation of those? Does the town...
What do you mean, the operation?
...were approving it? Well, there is a industrial, commercial area along a highway. The one that's currently being suggested in Hatfield is directly within a residential community. And so, what guarantees do we have in regards to how the operation of that is maintained to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood? So, I guess I'm saying that there's no guidelines for monitoring or the operation or the maintenance of that installation.
I don't understand the question. To be sure that it's operating, that it's producing electricity?
That it's well-maintained.
That the lawn is mowed? Or the grass is mowed, and the fence doesn't have a hole in it, and that sort of thing?
I don't think it would be any different than, say, Brockway Smith, who, you know, nobody from the town, I mean, if there's a bunch of junk trucks over there, I'm sure somebody from the Board of Health or the Building Commissioner, the code enforcement officer, would be responsible for enforcing cleanliness and maintenance.
So, if, okay, I follow that point. So, in the event that attention does need to be given, our recourse is to contact one of the building officials and let them know.
Yeah, if the, again, go ahead.
We're not the, we're issuing a, or the planning board would be issuing a permit, whether it be for a CNS facility or the food bank, but after that, the chief of police, the fire department, the building inspector, the electrical inspector, they're the ones that are going to enforce the rules and regulations, whether the building is maintained and kept up to proper standards.
I only have three more pages, Bob. No, I'm just kidding. I'm all done. I want to thank the board for listening to me and being patient.
Thank you. I hope we answered your questions. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Melody Edwards, 83 School Street, Hatfield, Mass. I really don't understand the process, even though I've been following this. So, as a layperson, could you please tell me if it's a special site or a special review is needed? The townspeople are trusting the planning board to decide whether...
That's what you elect us for. We're elected officials.
So, then, if a company wants to come in and they can convince the planning board that it's better for the town...
But it's held at a public hearing just like this.
How would we hear about that, again?
It's published in the newspaper. It's posted in the town hall. It's posted outside the town hall.
Where outside the town hall?
There's a bulletin board or something outside the side door.
Over here, there's a bulletin board with all the hearings.
Right, well, most people work during the day.
And it's advertised, we have to advertise it twice within a two-week period, in the legal notices and the Daily Hampshire Gazette.
Okay. But you guys are in charge of this, is... I know it's a stupid question, but I don't think people understand.
Again, it's a public hearing, so that it's not something that we do upstairs.
No, I get that part.
You folks come in and give us your opinion of things.
If we hear about it, right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And we can put conditions on the permit, either limiting the size, or, again, the color of the leaves of the trees, and size of the trees, and the landscaping, and all that sort of thing. Width of the driveway.
Okay.
That's all things the planning board can do under the special permit process.
Okay. And then, the decommissioning, it says that the Hatfield encourages the property in order to have a decommissioning agreement, but they don't have to. So, is that something that...
Well, again, we're not police. We don't have any policing authority. A wise landowner and his attorney, or their attorney, would have a decommissioning agreement in the contract with the solar folks, the folks that are installing that solar panel. They want to be sure that when its, life is lived out or the lease is expired, that they take their stuff away.
Right.
So, many times, I know that they require a bond or some sort of escrow account to be sure that there's funding to do that.
But technically, the town could end up responsible.
No, I don't see how. How could we do that?
Well, if somehow everybody went bankrupt, because it is both corporations...
We still don't, we don't own the property.
They don't go bankrupt, they got a bond.
There's a bond to cover that.
Well, you said it's not required, though.
Yes, it is.
The property owner's attorney would require that.
The attorney would.
Most attorney, if they're worth their weight in salt.
Attorney that is in charge. Okay, I'm just making sure, because it didn't, it was not clear in here. It just says you're...
Again, we don't have police authority, and we wouldn't be responsible to take it down, any more than, if any property is abandoned, the town isn't obliged to take it down. Many times, they do.
We can't tell you what to put in there.
In my property?
Yeah.
You're the planning board, of course you can tell me what to do.
No, we can't.
Now, if it comes to trees and you're in your bones, it's your choice.
Okay. I just, I was just asking.
Might not make your neighbors happy, but...
I have a question. Do you understand what's going to happen to this document?
It's going to be voted on in May.
Right.
But it was planned by the...
So, the town, the town could say, yes, this is a good document, or, no, we're voting against it.
Right.
I just want to make sure you under...
Oh, I get that part. It's just that the pro...
You're not here to approve a solar project.
No, I get that. Wait, the whole reason this is a big deal is because of a solar project, though. So, it's meaningful to some of us, these things are very meaningful. And I just think that this was put together by an Energy Committee that is very pro-solar. So, as a layperson, I can't completely understand all of this, and I don't think, and I'm involved in paying attention. If other people in town, they won't understand this. So, I'm just, that's why I'm trying to ask dumb down questions.
That's why we're giving you the opportunity, and I hope we answered your questions.
Really, pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dusso.
My name's David Dusso, live on Bridge Street in Hatfield. I'd like to talk about the process a little bit and where we've been with this. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, you said, Mr. Bartlett, meet with the Energy Committee, work together to put this together. We, in good faith, tried to do that.
Okay.
Okay? The Energy Committee was uncooperative, was adversarial, was rude to women when they showed up to the meeting. I don't see them being rude to me now or snickering to me. They're not so tough anymore.
Okay, let me just say, I...
No, I'm not done. And when I'm done, I'll tell you. Okay? Then they came back, and we said, you know, we'd like to do this together, and you said, no, we've already got one from the Energy Committee.
I said, time is wasting, because we're in the 11th hour. We have to have this ready for the annual town meeting warrant, like tomorrow morning.
Right.
So, there isn't time to think about it and talk about it, maybe get together.
No, 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 no. When this process was going on five weeks ago, there was plenty of time.
I gave everybody a deadline.
I'm not done. Stop interrupting me. There was plenty of time. They didn't want to work with us. Now, we have a document going to town that's been written by people who have a vested interest in solar power. And if there's not amendments made at the town meeting, this should never pass, and this board should have never, ever had let this gone through. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Absol- I'm not done. You should be ashamed of yourselves. There's no excuse for what you've done. None.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody, Mr. Edwards?
You got something to say, Chris? Say it to me.
Okay. It's not the time or place for this.
My name's Dan Edwards. I live on Bridge Street in Hatfield. I just wanted to talk about the table, the use table.
Yes.
And 6.23 and 6.24 look to be the same thing, except for one is about a cooperative. And above that, 9.632 defines what a cooperative is. And to me, this is how I read this, that, let's say, somebody has two pieces of property that are joined together, but they're two separate properties, and you have another property beside that, and you have, you know, X amount of acres of land that might be able to be used. So, you would, as of right, be able to put up many, many panels, a lot of solar devices, let's say, in order to get solar, receive, get solar energy. Now, I'm not sure whether this can be sold back. I know it says 200% usage of the cooperative. I don't know if this can be sold back to the grid and be made profit of, rather than be, like, with the 6.23, where it's a personal use of a property owner, it's for their own personal use. For 6.24, I just don't, I don't see why, 6.24 could be quite a sizable project. I'm not against sizable projects. But I think that it should be at least an SPA going across, rather than a Y, because it could be sizable. It's not that it's a, like, if I wanted to put some solar panels in back of my house or on top of my roof to supply myself with electricity. This could be a project. And I just think it should be either eliminated and go by a medium ground mount solar generating system. And if somebody wants to create a cooperative, then they can go follow the same process as a medium ground mount solar generating system, as in 6.25. But 6.24 could become 6.25. And I think it should be under the same type of scrutiny as the medium ground with SPAs and SPRs.
Let me just say, the 6.23, the way I see that as being the homeowner...
Yeah.
Panels on the roof, or if the house doesn't, isn't orientated correctly, panels on the ground, and we have some of those in town now.
Absolutely.
And if they put in 200%, then they can sell 100% back to the grid.
Okay.
If sunny day, and there's nothing, no power being used in the... If sunny day and there's nothing, no power being used in the house, it's going back to the grid anyway, I would assume. The way I read six point two-four, and anybody else, correct me if I'm wrong, on the board, that that would be you and your neighbor get together and say, let's put up some panels on our roofs, and I don't know why you would do it on the roof and combine it. But if you had a big backyard and, and we'll put the panels in my backyard because I have room for it and it's orientated correctly, and we'll put it in for two hundred percent of my house at your house, and sell back to the grid what we don't use. I think if it were any larger than that, we would consider it a medium.
But it doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't. But it, the...
But it doesn't say that, though. It says the cooperative. A cooperative can be ten houses, ten yards, which could be quite sizable if you have five acres per yard. I'm just saying that that's, shouldn't it at least be having the same scrutiny as a medium-scale project?
Let me, let me get a clarification. This, this nine point six-three-two says the cooperative should follow the guidelines as set forth in the two thousand eight Green Communities Act. Can the energy committee answer to that? What does that mean?
The Green Communities Act set a section aside specifically for cooperative, for multi... The idea was, is, especially in forested towns, there may be five or six houses that can't do solar, but the eighth house could, because it had an open field or whatever. Again, this limits it to two hundred percent. An average household uses about seven, six to seven kilowatts per household. To exceed that would be fourteen. Fourteen times eight still gets you under fifty kilowatts. You understand, you can't approach five hundred kilowatts for a medium system to do this. And in a typical cooperative, you have to be a resident from the town, and you have to do this in a joint way. So that the idea here was, when we did Solarize Mass, the town Hartford, I'm sorry, Harvard spearheaded this. And this is where we get this idea from and moved it forward. It was very successful. It does not exceed the sixty kilowatt situation. When you do that, you also exceed that metering, which then becomes revenue metering. And that would, again, exceed the two hundred percent. So there really is no way you're going to approach a medium-sized solar revenue. Again, the issue here is for selling, what's the difference? Are we selling or using? If we're using on-site or we're using as a resident, that electric power not exceeding two hundred percent, that's a differential. So I think that we're pretty clear here.
So that this reference to the two thousand eight Green Communities Act does not limit the number of properties that can co-op together? It could be two, it could be twenty-two, it could be a hundred and twenty-two?
Well, let me also say the Green Communities Act limits net metering to sixty kilowatts.
So that's the catch-all.
That's a catch.
That prevents it becoming a larger, a larger-scale project.
But it doesn't say that here.
Well, it refers to green communities.
But, but it refers to it. It doesn't say it's contingent upon it following the regulations of the Green Communities Act.
Well, no. It says the cooperative should follow the guidelines as set forth in two thousand eight Green Communities.
Should?
Yes. Okay. Let's get back to the sixty, sixty KW. That's, that's the maximum size of the co-op's generation facility?
For any individual business, or, you know, for instance, CNS can't exceed sixty kilowatts of getting that metering.
Okay.
Well...
Just to give you an example.
So therefore...
They'd have to go to a revenue-size project, and that's where your medium and so on would start to pick up.
Okay. Because the power company wouldn't be interested in buying sixty-five KW from...
The utility doesn't have to pay net metering if it exceeds sixty kilowatts.
Just so it's clear now that, so the Green Communities Act says that the cooperative will not generate more than sixty KW?
Doesn't say, won't. It just says that if you exceed sixty kilowatts, you now have to negotiate with the utility or an off-taker. And now you become a revenue-generating operation, not an individual user.
And then, and that would...
It takes away your incentives to do the whole project if you're an individual.
And the powers company is, they wouldn't buy sixty-five kilowatts. They wouldn't be interested in doing that.
Utility doesn't buy power from solar. You have to arrange something with an off-taker.
Well, that's what I mean. Yeah. I mean, yeah, I know there's a middleman in between, but I'm, for talking purposes. So that would limit, limit the co-op.
Those are outside of the bylaw rules. Those are rules...
Well, there's many laws that referred, the building code refers to, to
Sure.
other, other codes and other laws and that sort of thing. And I know when you look in the building code, you have to go get another book to look up what that, what that, if it said two thousand eight Green Communities. You have to look up and see what that says to be sure that you're within the parameter.
But it says it right, anyway. So they can just go ahead and do it in the, you know, with the building permit. But what I'm saying isn't...
No, I just use it as an example. I didn't say that was a limiting factor. There are master general laws that refer to other laws as well.
So my question then is, isn't it reasonable that if a group of neighbors want to put together a co-op to sell back electricity to a power grid, which is, you know, I'm all for free enterprise, but wouldn't it be reasonable that they should be, especially since there's going to be multiple possible applications? Like, on one property, you'd have one array. Another property, you have another array. Another property, you have another array. And by the time you create the array, it's pretty meaningful. So wouldn't it be, I'm not saying for six point two-three, but for six point two-four, wouldn't it be fair and reasonable to use the same SPA and SPR as medium? Wouldn't it be reasonable?
I guess we need to talk about it.
I really appreciate you talking about it.
You know, this refers to residential or non-residential use. But then it says all members must be residents of the town. So isn't that kind of contradictory?
It looks like commercial or residential.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It says either residential or non-residential use down in the one, two, three, four, five, sixth line. But in the second line, it says all members must be residents of the town. And if, if these are commercial buildings that are co-opping it...
They would probably be in a business.
Yeah, would be in a business, but they wouldn't necessarily be residences of town.
Right.
They might coincidentally live in town.
But they're domiciled in Hatfield.
Yeah, yeah. And it may not, and it probably is not, it may not be the same property as well.
But my, my question is, wouldn't it be reasonable? See, and the application is big...
That's what we're considering, the reason, reasonability of it. I don't know. What is anybody else's thoughts on that?
I'm just thinking that if you put all this up, like I've got all around my neighborhood, and you sell the place, probably prior to sale, it's going to be the solar part of it. And then whoever got the permit, is that all going to transfer with the property? Probably will. I don't know.
Yeah.
Or he might rent it, rent it to somebody and not be a resident. You can get into all kinds of things you want. To me, it's, it's the basic thing that you set it up for.
Yeah, that you set it up well, and you go through the proper process of having it come before you, and, and just, just go through some checks and balances. You know, that's, I think that's reasonable, anyway. Residences and personal usage, as of right, yes, 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 yes. Cooperatives, whether it's business application or personal application, just a good look over from you, you folks, I think would be a reasonable thing.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, so that we don't get a big facility through the back door.
Right, exactly.
By a number of homeowners co-opping together.
You know, the way you're saying, you're not going to build three houses with them and then sell them all to one person?
Yeah.
But within the deed, you can sell the part of the co-op with it.
Yeah, and that, again, that's a job for the attorneys to do.
Exactly.
How does everybody else feel about that, about carrying that SPA and SPR up to six point two-four across in order to give us a look at a co-op situation, so that we don't get a large, or a medium scale, or something approaching a medium scale by a number of...
Bob, I would think, you know, for the safety of the town and the townspeople, we should have that look.
Okay. Anybody else have any opinions on it?
I, I think it's something to consider.
Okay, well then...
I'm trying to think of a spot where, you know, an example where, where this could occur. You know, I guess, I guess it could occur anywhere. If everybody on Main Street decided to...
Yeah, yeah.
You got one, one, ten pieces of property in a row, you got a big...
One big farm. Yes, sir.
I still have the floor, but I'll yield temporarily.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll yield temporarily.
I thought, we're still considering this, so...
I understand. I'm waiting for the consideration.
Yeah, well, this gentleman may have something to offer.
I just measured my kilowatt-hour usage. It's twenty thousand. It's, it's huge down there. My double, I can get double, which is forty. But if I went any bigger, if I go to sixty, I can't go any bigger. A co-op can only go to sixty and still be in this position of being able to get reimbursed for the electricity they sell back. I think the lower, the very low limit of sixty is going to keep anything strange from happening here. Nobody's going to go out and put up more than sixty. Sixty's not much. I mean, forty's a lot. You've got eighteen on your house, right? Yeah. And I supposedly have to put up twenty just to cover my house usage, and forty if I can do it. But there may not be the money around to do it. I just want to point out that there are some houses that are going to come close to getting to the limit, and they put a few houses together. I probably, about ten houses could get to sixty, ten or maybe six or seven or something like that. And you're saying that then we need to go to an SPR or an SBA or something else? I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think that...
I just think it's reasonable. Not for, not for if you wanted to put up panels on your house and, and have your fields...
Just in the, just in the ground.
What you want to do. But I think it's reasonable if a group of neighbors want to do that, just have them
It should be...
go through the process. I think that's a safe, reasonable thing.
Okay. Again, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought maybe you had something to add.
That's okay, Bob. I'm okay.
We're neighbors. We know each other.
Right.
To help us decide on your... Does somebody else have something to add to Mr. Edwards? Well, the lady in back was first.
I just had a question about what he's talking about. So could a co-op be, let's say, somebody, does it have to be different people? Can it be an LLC? If somebody was to buy a building that had land and then turn it into an LLC and they owned the house next door, could that be considered a co-op? Corporations or people?
LLC doesn't make a co-op.
LLC is a business. It's residential.
Co-op, what is that?
Residential and non-residential.
Yes.
I heard someone at the meeting say, yes, business and personal.
I guess you're, yeah, I guess the answer is yes.
So then that could end up, I agree with him that, I mean...
It wouldn't end up a big project, though, because that, then that kicks into the next...
So if, let's say that somebody did that, and they, the house was not even lived in or something, that the land was on, couldn't they benefit commercially from that, from the electrical company? Because I don't understand how it works exactly. So what would the benefit to them be? Or he was, Chris was saying earlier that, that's supposed to be like there's eight neighbors and only one of them can actually do solar and share it. Why would one person share that with seven other people? Don't the person, wouldn't they benefit from that in some way?
Yeah, they would get their, they would, they would get their power.
Well, but why would they share it with all their neighbors, is what I'm asking? Why would they...
Because they, the neighbors formed a co-op.
No, but if the neighbors... What, I'm confused.
They get along with each other, and they feel like solar is important, and they want to, they want to
I think you're misunderstanding.
Have a zero electric bill, because the panels, the panels fit on my property, but his property doesn't have the, has too many trees on it. So, so we get, we get together, and we build the panels on my property, and he connects into them, and I connect into them.
And you just give that away for free?
No.
No, you share.
No, you share the cost as well. It's the cost of construction as well.
The cost of just the installation?
Yeah.
But I have to have a cooperative set up.
And maintaining it.
You'd share the cost of the whole process?
So, but somebody, the, the landowner would be the one who would be...
No, it would be both, both.
Both landowners.
Everybody in the co-op, my house, Chris's house, and Frank's house.
Right. But if, if only Chris's house could have the...
Let me see, maybe I can...
Pretty far apart.
Well, I was just saying, you had said, like, let's say there's one person that has land available, but there's eight houses. One person would have to be very generous to give over their land to help eight houses, even, I mean, why not just do it for yourself, then?
Because they set it up as a cooperative, and they may be leasing the land to the cooperative.
Oh, okay, wait. That's what I'm asking, actually.
And everybody pays, everybody kicks in for the construction.
So they can lease the land.
And everybody gets the benefits of the power.
But the landowner can benefit from that?
Everybody benefits from it, from connecting into the solar panels.
I'll let him ask the question.
Maybe I can address it soon, if I could, just a second. What we're talking about is a maximum of about two hundred...
Need to go to the mic, Chris?
I yield again.
Well, again, we're trying to clarify...
All right. We're basically in a cooperative situation, sixty kilowatts. We're talking around no more than two hundred panels. We're talking, in this situation, Green Communities Act says that if you do this cooperatively, Daryl, Frank, and I, and again, this says up to two hundred percent of our power, and we, that, and we're no more than sixty kilowatts. The utility is required to split up into thirds and, and credit each of us the power that's produced on our electric bills. That's what's called net metering. If you, if you go outside of that or beyond the sixty kilowatts, now you're doing what is called revenue metering. And that's what we talk about in the, and we're very specific about this being something that is sold, not used by the owners of the system. This is why I think it should be a matter of right. It gives more people the chance to go solar that may not be able to now. When we did the Solarize project, many people, including some of these people here, signed up for it. We had over a hundred seventy people sign up. We put in twenty-two systems, and about, I'd say, forty to fifty percent of them were not site-eligible for solar. If this is here that gives them that chance to, to go to their neighbor or get three or four neighbors and say, we need six, six-kilowatt system. You need a seven-kilowatt system. You need a five-kilowatt system. You need a whatever, until we get, you know, the maximum would be sixty. And I suggested eight would probably be the maximum for this. So I think for this purpose, you're very safe. You're not, you're not talking about circumventing anything. And if you do exceed the two hundred percent... And if you do exceed the 200%, the other part, too, is that it becomes taxable, okay? That's the other part. You can't exceed the percentage of your usage under Green Communities Act. So if you do, it becomes a revenue system.
Okay, so, thank you, Chris. So again, I think it's real reasonable to have SPA and SPR on 6.24 because it could be utilized by businesses, it could be used by individuals, which is great, pooling their resources together. But I think an oversight by the planning board, it's reasonable in that case. It's reasonable. Because it's going to be larger than just one house doing it. So for, for all the safety measures and just to, you know, I trust you folks to do your job. So it'll just help you to do your job better and to protect us better.
Okay.
Okay.
Skip, do you have something to add to that? Or clarification?
I yield.
Stan Pitchko, 65 Prospect Street. And I would like to suggest to the board that they consider, under 9.632, that first sentence, the cooperative should follow the guidelines as set out in the 2008 Green Communities Act. And all the members must be residents of the town, please change the word "should" after the third, the third word "should" to "will." That ensures that they will have to reflect upon, the Green Communities Act is one. The other is, I would also...
Let's back up to the change, what?
9.632.
Yeah, oh, the "should."
The "should" should be struck and "will" will be put in, either that as...
What about "shall"? "Shall" is a more...
Shall, must, will, "should" is kind of weak. It strengthens that particular sentence. Also, I would agree that SPA should be slid up into 6.24 as well as SPR. And then there's one aspect I don't understand, whether you're forming a cooperative or whether you're a single-home residential owner, if you can't sell the utility, why would you produce 200% if you can only use 100% of your own usage? You've got 100% just sitting there. So I guess I don't understand why it would be 200%. It should be maybe 100% of your own usage. And then adding or weaving in there as well, no more than 60 kilowatts, or no more than 60 kilowatts.
Well, the 200% does go back through the meter. Doesn't the meter run backwards and they, they do pay you or credit you some, the power company credits the homeowner, whatever is going back through the meter when the, when the panels are generating more than the house's use?
Why 200%? Good question, okay. Because it's farming, it's sun farming. From one year to the next, you're going to get different, you're setting a system to 200% of your use. You could have a volcano someplace and it clouds over the whole summer and it could cut your production in half. So if you have a 200%, it might just meet your 100%. That's why there's that latitude. This comes from Northampton and other communities that understand this is farming of sunshine.
So rather than designing the system for 100% of the house's uses and we get a cloudy month...
Cloudy rainy summer.
Or a snowy... Cloudy rainy summer or snow, then it would...
Not generate.
It would only generate half of what the house needs if it were only 100%. By making it 200%, it should, in theory, generate what the house is going to use for power.
Exactly.
So it's overdesigned to compensate for the cloudy days.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. And then I guess I would thank you for that explanation. The other part is, is I would agree, it just becomes a part of a process. It doesn't have to be an encumbering part of a process, but it does afford the town the opportunity by looking at 6.24 and shifting special permit approval and SPR up one line, it just becomes a prescriptive portion of getting something through and we get a looksee. And just, I hope you do consider changing that third word to "must," "will," "shall." Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything else? Mrs. Cox, I guess would be next.
Joan Cox, 44 Main Street. I think the "must" instead of the "should" is a really easy way of dealing with some of the worries that people have. I want to say why I think, first of all, that there are general worries about this, but also why I do agree in moving up the SPA for the co-op. I love the idea of co-ops, I think it's a great idea, actually. But think about, say, you have eight houses that are pooling and all the arrays are going to go on the eighth house, and then you've got a ninth neighbor. And that ninth neighbor may be then, looking out of her window, looking at a big array, having some screening, which would be able, you could, you know, the, your board could say, "Look, you know, no one..." Let's face it, as much as this is, solar power is really crucial for everyone to embrace, it's not gorgeous to look at. And I think that having the ability to say, "You're going to have to put some nice screening up so that the neighbor is not going to be staring at this," that's, that makes sense to me. I think we should be encouraging the co-ops. I think it's a, you know, it's a really good idea, so, but let's make people, you know, embrace this and they'll embrace it if they feel that their neighborhoods aren't going to end up looking, you know, like a big industrial plant. That's, that's the compromise, that's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you. Yes, sir. One more.
I just want to point out that you have to get a building permit to put one of these things together. And you've got to file wiring plans for the electrical inspector, you've got to file site plans for what you're doing, for what you're building to put up. It's very elaborate, involved process that requires you to plan it and build it correctly in order to be able to put it up anyway, apart from, from SPR and SPA and all that sort of stuff. There's a lot of inspection and checks on it.
I think, again, speaking to this...
I, I think we should, we should make a decision on this, then. I, I would make a motion that in paragraph 9.632, that we change the third word "should" to the word "shall."
Got that.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we change that. I, I would make a motion that we take the recommendations of the, of this public hearing and carry the SPA and SPRs up from, to reflect 6.25 and 6.26 into 6.24 across all the zones. Change the "yeses" to SPAs and SPRs as they are below.
So we'll...
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll make those changes, then.
Thank you.
And we just, okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to...
Mr. Lesko.
Mr. Lesko.
Ed Lesko, 131 Main Street, Hatfield. I don't, I didn't hear you cover this part, Bob, but on the 6.25 and the 6.26, the large and the mediums, if that's in a residential rural area or residential area and you've got houses that are around there and you put a big complex in there, a big solar system in there, what's going to protect that? We're trying to do a way...
The special permit process is going to...
Protect the people from that happening.
The special permit process is going to do that.
But the site plan approval allows it in a residential setting.
Yeah, but SPA is site plan, SPA is...
If you had a no there, it wouldn't allow it and you'd keep it in the other, in the business, industrial and light industrial.
But there are places in town that are zoned rural residential or outlying residential where it would fit and there isn't a house for half a mile. Bradstreet is a good example. There's plenty of room up there.
I know, and that's...
And there's no houses.
With all the spot zoning and stuff like that, that's already in existence, that's where we have a problem here. And it's really...
But SPA is...
Site plan approval does not protect the residents in that area.
Neither one are allowed with just site plan approval. SPA is special permit with site plan approval.
Oh, special permit approval?
And SPR is, okay, SPR is site plan review, yes, I'm sorry. SPR is site plan review.
That's in business.
But that's in the light industrial, industrial and business zones.
Only.
Only. The rest of it requires a special permit in the ag and...
With a site plan approval.
Rural, outlying, town center, town center business.
If you didn't allow it in a residential area, then that property would have to be rezoned to fit if they wanted to put a big...
No, they could, they could come in with a site plan review. And maybe it fits.
I know, right now, that's what it does.
Because there aren't any houses.
But I'm still saying...
I'm sorry, a special permit, and it might fit on the property without any houses being in close proximity. That gives us the opportunity to take a look at it and approve the project that fits where it belongs and doesn't fit where it doesn't belong.
Without having to go through the rezoning process.
Yeah.
Okay, it just seems like it's not going to work.
Well, that's, you know, that's what the public hearing is, is if the neighbors come and say, "We, we don't want this here because it's right outside my bedroom window."
We don't want it here, yes.
Well, that's...
I mean, if you just had outright no in residential...
No, because I think there are rural residential, Bradstreet is a good example, there's some rural residential up there, outlying residential, where there are no houses.
Right, but eventually there could be houses there.
But if the solar is there, the people are going to build a house there.
People are not going to build there, right.
Or they're going to build it knowing that the solar is there.
And then, and then we can put, we can put conditions such as trees and fences or whatever the, that's part of that SPA.
Or limiting the size of the... Big concern is setbacks and foliage or trees or whatever, that's going to...
Limit the size of the project as well.
I just saw, I just saw a picture of a, in Agua, on the solar panels around the house that was located on three sides. And that's the kind of thing you don't want to have happen.
Right on 50, right on Route 57, right?
Yeah. I certainly wouldn't want that around my house. I don't think anybody would want that around their house.
Why would we do that? We wouldn't do that because we don't want it either. I certainly wouldn't want it.
It just seems like in a residential area, somehow we can do it.
I think it gives us the opportunity to, to put it where it belongs, to allow it to be constructed where, where it is not the worst-case scenario. But where it is the worst case, where it might be three sides of a, of a residential property, we wouldn't allow it or we would limit the size of it or require more, more screening or something like that. It allows us to condition it.
And then the last comment I've got, I've heard multiple comments from everybody or from around the room here, and they're saying, "Go to town, whatever the case may be." But you need bylaws to protect the people, you just can't not have bylaws, okay? If you don't have any bylaws, they can do whatever they want. And a good example was over on Dwight Street with a chemical factory when it came in years ago in the 80s. And the people, and there was no bylaw that said they couldn't do it. And they put it in and that, that started the bylaw process. So you really need bylaws and that's what you need to protect it. So just don't vote this down, add to it if anything, because you need it to protect the whole town. Thank you.
This gentleman has not had the opportunity to speak.
My name is Mark Stein, 461 Main Street. I served on the master plan committee and I'm here as a concerned citizen. I also have a, a large field in back of my house. And in getting to what Mr. Lesko was saying, I also feel that some of these residential areas, some of the residential zones should be a no for these types of, for this type of development, which is an industrial, light industrial, but it's certainly an industrial type of development. When we went over the table of use in the master plan, we debated very much about where specific types of businesses, where specific types of commercial and industrial development should be located and whether they would be appropriate with, with special permits or site plan approvals, et cetera. And we're, in a way, singling out this one business, and it's a business, we're singling out this one business and saying that we're, that we feel it's appropriate to be located in residential areas where we don't let, I don't know the table of use by heart, but we let none or, or very few industrial types of development in residential areas. Now, I agree, there are some pieces of property that would be appropriate for this type of development. Those pieces of property would be appropriate for many different types of business, commercial or industrial development because they are so large and so isolated from, from other houses. But we don't let that type of development on those pieces of property because of the way it's zoned. And I think that people expect that type of protection when they buy a house here in town or whether they've been living in a neighborhood for many years or many generations. I think we're relying on the, on the zoning bylaws to protect our neighborhood, to protect our investment. It's, in a way, depending on, depending on the, the specific setting of a proposed development, you can be, you know, starting more contentious situations in town where people feel like they're really fighting for their neighborhood and fighting for their investment in their home. So I, I strongly would hope that you would think about and deliberate on, on, on not allowing this kind of development in some of these residential neighborhoods. And I, I, like Mr. Lesko said, I think it is important to have a bylaw. I think it will have a lot better chance of, of, of passing a town meeting if the residential neighborhoods are protected. Thank you.
Gentlemen, have some talk.
Dave Misanti, 55 Prospect Street. Seconding what the gentleman said before me, why don't we put a, a restriction on the number of feet of proximity that a medium to large scale solar array could be to a residential home? That way we protect the rural residential nature of the town. What Bob was saying before, there are some rural residential areas that are well, located well away from any residents. And if that was an appropriate site for something like this, so be it. But why don't we say that something like this couldn't be within, I don't know, 800 feet of a, of a home? That way you're not looking out your window that you...
That's bigger than any building lot.
Could, do you have a better suggestion?
In other words, you don't want it anywhere that is residential. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah. I'm saying that, but I mean, if there are, as a chairman...
800 feet is a lot of footage.
The chairman noted that there was areas that weren't close to residences. So do you have a better suggestion as to what number of foot should be?
I, I would say we should look at each individual case under the special permit process.
So in one, in one case, one person's investment in their home is less important than someone else's?
No, maybe, no. I think we should look at that.
It should be in the bylaw.
And maybe it needs to be 800 feet away and maybe, and at the other end of town where there are no residences, it only needs to be 50 feet off the property line. Because there are no houses there, too.
Well, if there's no houses, then it would be by definition further away, right?
No. It's whatever the bylaw is for that category of...
I think we should look at each individual case.
Yeah, but then you're, it's capricious, it's not fair, you don't have a sense that something like this, if you, if you happen, happen to be better connected, it could be, you have a better chance?
What does better connected mean? Connected to the power grid, I assume, is what you mean? What does that mean?
What that means is it should be fair to, that everyone...
Well, I think we've been more than fair.
It should be fair to everyone in the bylaw... It should be fair to everyone in the bylaw that when they buy their home, that there's not gonna be a medium to large scale, scales industrial development
That's what a special permit process is for, so we can hear their opinion.
I mean, I'm, I'm only echoing what you said before, that as part of the process, this wouldn't be placed in a rural, rural residential area that was close to a group of residences or a neighborhood. So what is the distance that, that we should together decide upon?
What it needs to be to provide
But is that a number or is that just?
I don't have an, I, I, I think we need to look at each individual case.
It's similar, I wanna, similar, doesn't have to do with solar, but if you go up and down Main Street, there were many houses on Main Street that were single-family homes. And as that generation passed on, that many of those single-family homes now, like I bought, say if I bought a house on Main Street, I and, and wanted a single-family home. And now I'm, now I'm there and there's a house across the street, there's two down the street, one up the street, that are being turned into apartments. So what's happened to your neighborhood, which was all single-family residents, is now multi, multifamily. And I, I kinda view that as the same type of process that they had to come before a, a board, probably before this board, but as we go along and, and as that continues, everybody that wants to do that, they have to come before this board and say, "I'm, I'm putting addition on so I can make another apartment or make another," and in some cases we, we turn them down. So it's on a case-by-case basis. So it's, it's, I kinda view that as almost like a similar type of thing that, you know, if there's, if there's somebody on Main Street that wants to put up a big solar array, you know, we're gonna look at that, as opposed to somebody that's out in a rural, outlying rural residential where there's nobody around. We'll look at that on a case-by-case basis. That's the way I view it.
And it's all done in an open hearing. It's not done behind closed doors or anything to that extent.
Right. And, and as you say, it's like, it's, it's, we, we do consider, we have, we have, since I've been on this board, we have disapproved many projects because of public input.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Dusso has not had an opportunity to speak.
Mary Dusso, 24 Bridge. So I appreciate that you called on me because it's just a supporting statement to what Dave just said, which is without a proper, proper definition, we're subject to the board. And when I look at the board that's in front of us, you guys approved by all intent, 8,600 solar panels to be installed.
We did not approve that.
We didn't approve it. It was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn from this board. If you, if you were here at the public hearing that we held-
It certainly was.
But we're, you know, but, but the process here in Hatfield has been one of, you know, a constant circle of, of, well, you know, no, I didn't do it, I didn't do it, we didn't, you know. And so, and we appreciate that. So, so let me just make my, my final point, which is we appreciate, and I completely agree, that we need bylaws, right? I mean, without, without the guidelines, we can't, you know, we can't have a good discussion. However, my, my point is that we're then, without proper regulations, we're at the subject of whoever sits on the board and their opinion, right, their opinion of what's fair. And, and that's my concern. So, so I do think that we have to err on the side of being stricter, let's say, in, in what we have in the bylaws, so that we have less of a chance that it's an opinion of a collection of six individuals that are making that decision of, should it be 800? Or should it be a thou- you know, I mean, what, what, what's the right number? But
Next thing coming up is Narwhal.
Right. I mean, as it currently stands today, we have 8,600 solar panels that are, that are proposed to be installed in a residential area that has upwards of 20 abutters.
I thought it was a fire.
And that's just wrong.
We did not approve that.
That's just wrong, but, 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 you know, I mean, please appreciate that that's, that's what's happening today, and that's just wrong. And so if we, you know, if we appear, if we, right, but if we appear that we wanna err on the side of having, you know, strict regulations put in place, this is precisely why. You know, don't let this happen to other people in other, in, in, in other neighborhoods in Hatfield.
One more time, Skip.
Thank you, Bob. Stan Pichko. Made some immense concessions on this by sliding some of those up to 6.24. What was I going to say? It completely fell out of my head.
Sit down a little.
Okay, I, I know what I was gonna say.
Sit down and think.
Got it. Under, taking Mr. Lesko's point in regards to rural residential and outlying residential, right now they're under SPA. That doesn't guarantee that it would be a no vote, right? It just, they can present.
It gives us the opportunity to say no.
Right, gives you the opportunity to say no. But if there's two sides, one wants it and one doesn't want it, right now, the weighted side goes to not the resident that sits right next to that property. I, I guess what I'm saying is, is if you were to make those rural residential and outlying residential no, and somebody wanted solar panels there, they would have to go for a zoning change. And then it would be their problem to get the, the panels there. Right now, as it sits, somebody's gonna come in and they're going to, and I don't know if this is an anomaly, but somebody's gonna come in and say, "Well, I wanna put solar panels here," and then the neighbors have to fight to stop it. So somebody's got a battle on their hand, and, and I guess what I'm saying is, why should it be the neighborhood's battle to stop it? Why shouldn't it be the battle of the person that wants to put it in there to change the zoning and/or hire an attorney?
It just has to be somebody coming in and expressing their opinion, and if there's enough neighbors that express a negative opinion, then the planning board is gonna take that to heart.
Well, it doesn't have to be a battle, but there's gonna be rational discourse, and there's gonna be somebody that wants it and doesn't want it. And I guess my point is, is where do you wanna wait it? If there was a waiting to this, maybe it should be weighted in favor of the neighbors, and, and by making it no, then it would be a, an issue of getting the zoning changed if they were passionate enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, this ma'am. I didn't see the other hand.
So, Melody Edwards, 83 School Street again. When you guys, moving forward, it'll be in your hands, are you going to put more value on how it's going to impact property values when something like this goes in, and the enjoyment of people who already reside here, their, their enjoyment of their property? Is that going to be the important thing? I, I don't, I'd like to know, like-
Not property values, but how it impacts
The neighbors.
The neighborhood.
Their citizens.
Okay, well, like, for instance, the current issue, it's going to impact the neighborhood. Nobody moves to Hatfield to be next to, like,
8,620 panels.
Or, you know, CNS. They move to be next to a farm field. They're not gonna move to be next to a solar field. So that will impact, like, I think, property values, and I've read stuff that says the same.
But that's not part of our consideration.
Okay, so is enjoyment of property, of our properties, any of your concern? And how many residents-
That's why you come here and say, "I can't enjoy my property because this is happening next door or down the street or across town."
So how many neighbors does it take for that to be-
I don't know. It takes whatever it takes. It might be-
Well, for, no, but this is you making a decision and you're
I can't tell you. It, it, it depends on the case.
Well-
Depends on what you're gonna say as neighbors.
So if we all came and said to you that we don't want this, it's not good for the town, it just seems like there's a lot of people who don't want this.
Then you tell us why.
We have. So like, if 30 people came, then it might change your opinion of certain-
That's a pretty overwhelming majority, yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
Could be one or it could be 50.
Okay.
Be a thousand.
Really, a thousand?
I'd be surprised.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to understand how you worked the process.
We look at the history of the board, you know, recent times at least, you know, we have disapproved, we disapproved a subdivision on Elm Street. We've had a few projects that we disallowed, so we have not approved every single project that comes in front of us.
I understand.
And I just wanna point out the process, by the way. As far as the Elm Street subdivision, we did not approve it with the neighbors around there. And unfortunately, they have a right to appeal, and they appealed, and then the court decided on allowing the subdivision to go in. But we listened to various people around the subdivision, and we didn't, we disallowed that project. So we do, you know, it depends on the double people.
I'm trying to understand how the board works. So you don't ever allow personal issues with other people, or if you have relationships, that doesn't come into play?
Free day would be in court.
I'm just making sure. Okay. It's a small town, you know?
This lady hasn't had an opportunity to speak.
Donna Fan of 80 Prospect Street. So you're gonna tell whoever wants to put a solar system up that it looks ugly, that it's not right for your neighborhood, but yet you'll let the truckers come through, the potato people come through with huge trucks making noises at 5:30 in the morning where solar panels don't make any noise? Where you can hide the solar panels with fences. I'm talking to everybody. But yet, these huge trucks from CNS that come through, you know, we've got wickles that come by at 5 o'clock in the morning, wake you up. Solar panels don't do that. You know, I, I just don't see the agony of solar panels hurting anyone. Of what?
Thank you. Okay. You can talk outside.
Are you on the floor?
Well, yeah, I guess we would be, right? I don't know if it is or not, because we got a letter for it. I'd rather stop the trucks going through town than I would solar panels.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, so it's wrong, you know? Solar panels aren't hurting anybody. Well, do those trucks make a lot of noise too?
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything new to offer? I think Mrs. Cox was up before you, Ed.
Just a question. Do you, do you have to contact the abutters of any project?
Yes.
Maybe not, you have to always go down to the town hall.
The abutters and the abutters to abutters within 300 feet of the project are notified by mail in addition to the public notices that are published in the paper. So the direct abutters and the abutters to abutters within 300 feet. If you're 302 feet beyond, you're not an abutter to an abutter anymore, within that 300 foot. So yes, the, the abutters are notified by mail.
Ed Lesko, 131 Main Street. I didn't see anywhere in here, Bob, about setbacks, okay? There's nothing in here that says anything about-
Setbacks are in the bylaws.
Zoning bylaws. That's what I'm, I'm just wondering if it-
And then, and if we feel that something needs to be farther away from a line or farther away from a street, we can make that part of our conditional requirements in the special permit.
Shouldn't it be in part of the solar bylaw also?
Because it's here. It's, it would be redundant, and if we wanted it to make it greater, it can be more restrictive. Then, then we can make it greater. We feel that it-
I did see it here, and that's what I was trying to make sure that-
So we don't get it three sides of a house. We move it over 1,000 feet or 800 feet.
I just wanna make sure it complies with all the other bylaws.
Yes, it has to. It has to. David.
I'd like to thank the planning board tonight and everyone who came. We finally had a discussion about this. We finally had a chance to discuss this openly without the hostility that we felt. We look forward to the town meeting. We look forward to adding amendments to this. We had looked forward to informing the town. So hopefully, they won't be in the position that we're in, so that the townspeople throughout Hatfield will not have their property values decreased, will not have to worry about this thing sticking in their nose. We look forward to that discussion, and we appreciate tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's the purpose of a public hearing. Does anybody else have anything new to offer? It's getting to be 9 o'clock. I would make a motion that we recommend the, the article as amended, we amended 9.632. We scratched "should" and we put "shall" in there. And we amended 6.24 to put SPA, 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 SPR, 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 SPA across the board in 6.24. I would recommend that we, I make a motion that we recommend this be placed on the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting. Second it. Second. Any further discussion amongst the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for coming out. Thank you for your input. Other business. Yeah, has everybody read our minutes?
Yep. I make a motion to prove them as read.
Seconded. Any further, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. The other thing I have to talk about, the
You wanna go outside, please?
Please.
Please, we can't hear. We still have a meeting going.
We have more business to take care of. You're welcome to go outside and talk.
Well, shut the door. Don't shut any heat off.
Mr. Bardwell.
Pardon me? Yes. Cory made the motion and I seconded it.
What was the motion? I can't hear the motion.
Bob made the motion and Cory seconded it.
Oh, that was the minutes she was talking about.
Oh, the minutes. I'm sorry.
Oh, you did?
Get it right, Wilma.
I thought you were talking about-
I made a motion. I did something, okay?
The, the other thing we have to consider is this medical marijuana thing. Thank you. This solar is an issue, but this is gonna be more of an issue. We have, the, I have a letter from the, through the selectmen.
Never mind.
You wanna raise it? Apparently there's a couple cities and towns in the Commonwealth who've said, "No, we don't want it in our town." Well, the Attorney General says you cannot not have it in your, you cannot zone it out of your town for medical marijuana dispensaries.
There's gonna be eight towns in the county.
I've already had three citations.
And so therefore, we need to consider this, but it's getting too late to do it for this town meeting. Some of the towns have put a moratorium on it pending zoning act to allow it in, where they want to allow it in order to limit it. So I, because we don't have time to, to have public hearings and that sort of thing, I, I think we should recommend the selectmen that they
Well, excuse me, I believe they've had one year moratorium on it already.
The town or the state?
No, claimed, yeah, the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, well then
It came up at the Board of Health meeting, the selectmen.
Okay, so that, yeah, this was from from Monday, so they've taken action on it in the meantime.
They had a meeting yesterday, so I'm glad. They've had three citations already.
Okay.
I have to record this sentence. It takes a half hour to do it.
Then that answers that. I mean, i- i- if they haven't, then they should. Because we don't have time to do it. Well, they should be, because
What are you pushing onto the board house?
Medical marijuana.
That's good. We'll take care of it.
They, they also, the Board of Selectmen are asking about a proposed amendment to the bylaws regarding hobby farm noise and other complaints. And, yeah, apparently somebody has a rooster. And the rooster is making noise, no, all day long.
Just tell him to keep it dark.
I think the rooster needs a hen. So they have an amendment that they, but again, we don't have time to deal with it for, for, for annual town meeting, so
Wouldn't that be a, like, an enforcement?
Yeah, but it doesn't-
They're telling you to shut that rooster up. They're telling you to shut that rooster up, or put him out in the woods someplace, but all they got to do is keep their place where that rooster sleeps dark, and he won't get up.
Okay, but-
The only thing that makes him crow is when he sees sunlight, he's ready to go.
Okay. Well, I, the reason I'm bringing it up is because we don't have time to take any action on it, so therefore, I guess we, we, we need to take it up later in the year when, when we can-
So that would be like farm animals.
Yeah. It goes under the farm, under the definitions of farm, farming in the definitions section
It must be, it's cold outside. Did he go up or you bar?
I think it's 9.29 farm business, and-
It's getting cold.
It puts language in there so that the doghouse, or the, or a police officer can enforce noise relative to farm animals. There's nothing regulating farm animals. So we, we need to table that for now until, until we have time to take action on it.
Yeah. They're talking about individuals' property, right?
Yeah.
I mean, someone's own property?
What else do we have on the agenda? I think that's-
Deal with it, we may-
My agenda. I've got it here. I've got it here. So, uh, anybody else have any other business to talk about?
Next meeting is scheduled.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about, our, our next meeting. Again, I don't have a calendar.
We have a calendar here, can you?
We've had it, April, April 3rd. Let's see, April 3rd is two weeks from tonight.
Yeah. Why don't we schedule our next meeting for April 3rd at 7:30?
April 3rd?
Yes. That's the first Wednesday in April.
They're ready to go somewhere.
When's the town meeting? One more, again? Is that the 8th?
May, under May.
Second Tuesday in May, but May starts late.
So, second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday.
That'll be the 14th then?
Yep. And the election is the 21st.
Wednesday the 3rd?
It's my birthday.
Yes. Wednesday the 3rd is our next scheduled meeting. We don't, we don't have anything, any business now, but there's-
Could be something that-
There may be a special permit application coming in. I, I guess there's one pending, and we can discuss the-
Solar, solar project.
No. We can discuss the handling of that. 7:30, yes. So I will, I will compose a letter tomorrow to the selectmen to recommend that the, that this proposed bylaw, as amended, go on the warrant. Okay? I don't have anything further. Anybody else?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.